So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kern, all in favor. Second by, got the second. Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor.
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. Mr. Benyani will be a little late tonight. Do I see any walk-ins? Yes, sir. If you could identify yourself in the record, sir, and your address. We don't know who you are, but this is the way we operate, right?
Excuse me. David Darty, 122 Gilson Road. I'd hope that this could be his only meeting to spare me this. I've lost my battle with cancer. My days are limited. To get the final treatment that I can, that maybe prolong my life a month or two longer, I have to stay near Boston, near Dana Faba. Consequently, I'm forced to spend my last days of my life here in Situate, a town that I loved very much for the last forty-five, almost fifty years. But I'm gonna have to listen to that demonic thing in the backyard. It started up again. It's gonna torment me to the last days of my life. I'm not a pleading man, but I know you talked about shutting that thing down year-round. This is the time to do it. I had shallow flicker tonight, too, because we're here later than I usually am. Another thing's starting up in my backyard. I didn't know we had it. You're gonna make me listen to that thing for the last days of my life? Please don't do it. Show me there's some humanity left in this town.
Dave, I'm sorry for your cancer, really, sincerely.
All of a sudden, I had stage four, like that.
Mr. Darty, thank you for your.
And I don't, and I don't wonder, and I wonder if everything I've read about vibroacoustical disease from the infrastructure of that damn wind turbine caused the cancer in my throat to develop so fast. I don't know. I was a healthy man a while ago, and now I'm dying. Goodbye.
Very sorry, Mr. Darty. Do I see any other walk-ins? All right. Next on our agenda is the report of the town administrator.
Good evening. I have a few things, but I'll be fairly quickly. We're finished construction on Old Oak and Bucket Road. The contractor went in last week and made repairs to the trench. We're really having issues with the contractor and their paving contract subcontractor. So at this point, Old Oak and Bucket will most likely sit for the winter, and we'll come back in the spring and pave that. The work on Brook Street is continuing. We're finishing up on Foam Road. They began that installation last week. That's a replacement of a two-inch line with no hydrants and no ability to flush with a six- or eight-inch line that will have hydrants. So those people will see a huge improvement in their water quality and water pressure. So that'll be finished up hopefully next week. Our total average demand for the past week was 1.38 million gallons, which is up slightly. We seem to be in the 1.1 to 1.3 million gallons a day range, which is not bad. That will drop as we get colder. The manganese levels in the reservoir continue to drop, but they're still high enough to cause discolored water. And we ask that people let us know if they're having that problem. The reservoir's at minus 3.5, and Tac Factory Pond's at plus five inches. And we had a quarter inch of rain over the last five days. The COVID cases for the past week was at fourteen, which is down from sixteen of the previous week. However, our positivity rating was up to 1.88 from 1.62. So those numbers seem to be going in different directions. Plymouth County was 3.19, which is the same as the 3.18 the previous week. And the state was up to 2.07 from 1.80 of the previous week. So we seem to be in the teens with our numbers, right around two with our percentage. So that's good. We hope it stays that way. We don't think those numbers are gonna spike, but we'll keep an eye on those. The federal government has new guidance out for the Pfizer shot for people who want to get a booster that is available. You go to mass.gov and determine who's eligible and where to get them. The FDA has approved Moderna's booster shot and Johnson &amp; Johnson's booster shot. That needs to be approved now by the CDC, which is expected this week or next week. The Moderna will be for people over sixty-five and over and those with underlying health conditions. The Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, from what I understand, will be for anyone who received a Johnson &amp; Johnson shot. You should get a booster, a second shot. Final approval is expected next week, end of the month, and then people will be able to start getting those boosters. First Parish Road, we're again waiting for the contractor. We're expecting him at the end of the week. He'll come in Thursday, maybe Friday, raise all the structures. And then he's scheduled to come in to pave on Monday or Tuesday of next week. Weather-dependent, that's been a problem that we've been having lately. Again, we'll tell people, once that's paved, we'll be running intensive traffic enforcement up there. So you better slow down. And it's always the people who complain about the speeding that get the first ticket. So forewarn is forearmed. Take it slow on First Parish when we do that repaving. The Steadman Rink, this is probably the last time I'll put this on the agenda. The Steadman Rink project is finished. It looks great. If you get a chance, go over and take a look at it. They are hoping to have a ribbon-cutting. I don't have any details on that. But that was to the Community Preservation Act and donations from the Steadman family. But it really came out very nice. The graphics look fantastic. So if you get a chance, please go over and take a look at it. The minute we opened it, there were kids on it. The Well 17 green sand filter is complete. All the work is done there. Now they're in the testing phase. They're testing all the equipment. They're training the staff on how to run that green sand filter. We are still on schedule to return that to service sometime this fall. And again, that is 225,000 to 250,000 gallons of water that will have no iron and no manganese in it. So we won't be putting any brown water back into the system. Excuse me. The Widow's Walk Clubhouse continues to move around. I talked to the contractor last week. They're expecting to make great strides this week and next, especially on the outside of the building. They're planning on finishing up the siding of the building so they can do the landscaping outside. So that's gonna pop up this week. They're also cleaning out all the stuff in the interior in preparation for final painting. Really, the issue right now is with the floor. The slab is wet. The concrete slab is wet. We think it's just from all the wet weather we've had. If that's the case, we just need to dry it out. If there's an issue with the moisture coming from underneath, we'll have to deal with something else because of the way the floor works. But we think we're gonna just get it dried out and be able to put the floor down and move right ahead with that. So that's really gonna start taking off and looking final shape within the next couple of weeks. I bet any of the board members want to take a ride down and take a look at it. It's, it's really starting to come along. Same at the Hammerock Fire Station. The quarters are moving along. They should be finished with drywall and working on finished plumbing and finished electricity and getting ready to paint. Apparatus bay is a little further behind. We are still shooting for Thanksgiving for that. Again, it's important to get that done because we have to get that truck inside out of the cold, which right now it's in a tent on Fourth Cliff. So we're pushing that, and hopefully we'll get that done around Thanksgiving. Cedar Point, this will be one of the last Cedar Point updates you're gonna get for a while. Cedar Point is, for all intents and purposes, finished. We were expecting, if you saw my update yesterday, I was expecting the paver at the end of the week. He showed up yesterday morning, and they finished the day. They finished all the paving, so the contractor's out there doing some landscaping, cleaning up. And then next week, we're scheduled to have the line painters come in. It is the thermoplastic, which is in short supply. So they are scheduled for next week, but that could change. We have to put the lines down. We do the lighthouse parking lot and all that stuff. It really looks fantastic. I went out there today. The road looks great. The island looks great with the new curbing and everything. So that's gonna be really, I think, pretty fantastic when we get it all done. We will have some police out there monitoring that for speed, even though it's a much smaller loop. But just when you put down nice pavement, people tend to go faster. So we'll have the police out there, too, running some radar, just slowing some people down in that area shortly. Last but not least, town meeting is next week, the 26th, on the high school gymnasium. Some big things on the agenda that we'll be talking about later tonight. We are expecting people to tend to wear masks for the safety of themselves and the safety of others, and practice social distancing to the extent possible. But it's gonna be an interesting town meeting, so I hope people plan on attending and getting out of there in one night and take care of business. That's all I have for tonight.
Good. Questions from the board?
I have one. Jim, down at Cedar Point, I haven't been down to see the lines. Are there lines that sort of give space for walkers along? And is it a one-way around? Did we do anything like that?
No lines on the streets I know of at all, right, Kev?
Will it be lined at all? You're not lining it?
No changes from what it was before. It's gonna be the same thing.
So the line strike will take place in the parking lot around the island.
All right, so we're not putting anything, since people historically go one-way. Might be, I don't know, just a nice safety addition.
But the roads seem a little wider. Aren't they a little wider? And they are? They seem it.
I think the edges are just cleaner, so it looks like it's wider. I'm sure people have gotta push their driveways and their walkways and their lawns on a little bit. So it's not really wider. It's just so much cleaner.
I don't know. Food for thought.
That might be something that could be looked into in the future as a CPC project and get some people involved, and we could strike it or do something.
To line it.
But, you know, we don't wanna just strike it without talking, having a meeting with the residents and the little walkers and everything else. So we kept it the same.
Ms. Canfield.
I'm sorry, just so I understand on the Widow's Walk, the concrete slant type, is that where the storage, the cart storage is on the lower level?
Yeah, it's the roof of the, of the storage, and it's the floor of the upstairs. And then we'll put a floor down on that, but we have to dry it out before we can put the floor down.
So it's, it's wet from between the ceiling and the second floor?
No, we just think the concrete got wet because it was open all summer.
Oh, okay.
And it has to be dried out. So we're drying it out at this point. We think that'll work. And then we can put the floor down once we get the slab dried out.
And you said that you're training folks for the green sand filter, but there's no one's gonna be on site at that facility, right?
It's not manned, no, but it's still, you still have to go up and backwash it and do all that stuff and make sure it's running right.
They'll be there twice a day.
Yeah, and it's, there's, there's a lot of pipes. If you wanna go take a look at that, there's a lot of pipes, so.
That's all. Thank you. All right, we can move along. Discuss vote, new draft precinct map. Kathy Gardner, town clerk.
What you have there is the final precinct map, which is nothing like the boundaries I showed you two weeks ago. So after going, well, we saw, I'll show you in a minute. But the, all the precincts except for four and five are the same. So after going back and forth with the state, I didn't think they'd listen to me. I really didn't. I thought they were adamant about those precinct lines I showed you. And I wasn't understanding why, because the numbers weren't really changing. There wasn't any differential in their numbers. Their numbers are older than mine, so I have less population than they do by about 200, 300. So anyhow, you have the block report that I handed in to you late today, which I apologize for. And that's basically the demographics of the population in each precinct. So the precinct map is not changing, other than the area of Edward Foster Road, which there's no houses on, okay? Right here, this is St. Mary's intersection here. Right here is now gonna be six. It was four. And you go up Front Street, the east side of Front Street, and you turn at the pier, and you go to Beaver Dam. The house is across from the hotel. Those, take on, take the right onto Jericho, down to the boat ramp. Those houses on the right on the east side. Those are the only, so we're going from four to six. That's the only change to the precinct map. So I'm relieved because this, what they were doing here was incredible, was like a lot. So I'm relieved about this. So there's probably maybe, it's besides the condos on Front Street. There's probably about maybe ten houses involved, and then the condos and apartments on Front Street.
That's great.
So it's good. Sean McCarthy and I reviewed the legal description. And we, I reviewed it, and they had Google Maps up with the state. They had some language with the railroad going to the Marshfield Line. It's actually the railroad right-of-way now, because there's no railroad track there. So those were the minor changes to the legal descriptions. The state said, "That sounds good to me," sent them to Cindy Amara. And we have now the legal descriptions is what I gave you. And the, that's it. I have the block data report for you to approve and the map and the legal descriptions, which have been reviewed by the state, myself, and Sean. So we're good to go. If you have any questions, that little piece of paper on the top left-hand corner. So basically, every town, city in town is a grid, and they're called blocks. And the assessors knows more about this than I do. Each block is numbered, and they never change. So the blocks are always constant, and then the precincts, when then the blocks, will change every ten years as the outcome of the federal census. So that's where we are now, and it's just a minor change.
Questions?
Nope.
Yeah, thank you. An enormous amount of work.
I'm so glad, like, this, it's great. They do it in phases, so it doesn't seem as painful, because it starts three years ago. So it's all phases, and it's, it's been okay. But I was like, that was, they had some big changes that they were gonna do, and I just couldn't understand it after looking at their block numbers.
Yeah.
And I pulled a recent report, and I'm like, this does not make sense, nothing. It's like apples and oranges, you know, so.
Ms. Kern?
Kathy, so do we have 19,000 registered voters now?
That's what, no, that's total population. We have 15,560, I think I pulled for the special town meeting.
Fifteen thousand what?
Five hundred and sixty, I think it was, when I read the report, because I had to pull the report from the town meeting.
That's pretty good for voters, given the fact that so many are kids in that population.
Yep, and we have, we have probably 400 inactive voters that have probably moved out of town, but I'm not allowed to delete them for a period of two or more years unless I have a signature from them. So.
Thank you for that clarification.
No worries. You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
Should we just note the state precincts, the proposed changes for the state?
So I did look at the representative district. So the state has redistricted probably the congressional district and maybe the senate. And it looks like they gave, well, a town clerk president, somebody in the Mass Town Clerks Association, sent us all the proposed new districts for rep race. And I don't really get involved in that until I get something from the state. But it does look like that we are losing Joan Machino, and precinct three will now become the fourth Plymouth District, which would be Patrick Kearney's. So no more two separate ballots anymore. First time ever since two thousand.
And what's the effective date of that?
I don't know. They haven't voted on it. I think it's tomorrow.
The House is voting tomorrow, and then it takes effect at the next election cycle. Whatever, whatever comes next.
Next fall, yeah, unless it's a special, but yeah. And we'll get notification of that as well, and I'll copy everybody on it. I don't know about the congressional district or the senate yet, but that's all I, I had heard that the other day, so. And that's your precinct?
Yes, I get to come back into the big house.
Normal is dealing with a split rep now. They're proposed going into.
Rep Keating gets upon a normal.
Yeah. And she's, she's like, what do I do? And I said, "You don't wanna, you don't wanna talk to me." It's hard. All these different ballots, it's hard. You have to really pay attention.
Great. Would you like a motion?
So the congressional districts will be coming up next.
Right.
And they're actually harder, because the variance between districts is much smaller than what they are for. These are plus or minus five percent. I think the congressional districts are supposed to be plus or minus like one.
Oh.
Not 1%, one. So it'll be interesting to see, since we're at the tail end of Congressman Lynch's district, it'll be interesting to see if what happens with us and Lynch and Representative Keating.
I still think Keating knew now, so after all these years. All right, do you want your motion?
Can I just interrupt before you put the question? It says, "The 2020 re-precincting plan," in parentheses, it says "map and boundaries." Could you include map, block, and boundaries, block data and boundaries? And is that okay?
I move that the select board vote to accept the 2020 re-precincting plan, the map, block, data, and boundaries for the town of Situate as presented.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, Colin Taylor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstained.
Mr. Benyani's abstaining. Motion carries four, zero, one?
One, yeah, I think so.
Whatever that is.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you for all that work.
Thank you very much, everybody. I'm gonna try to get out of here as graceful as possible.
Be graceful.
Thank you. It's not my little name.
Next on our agenda is interview of board and committee applicant. We have an applicant, Elizabeth Howie. That be you?
Yes, I would.
And Elizabeth is applying for the, I believe it's an open space on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes.
If you could state your name and your address.
Elizabeth DeVille Howie, 762 Country Way, Apartment Three, Situate, Mass.
Thank you. Well, you have a very impressive resume. And I'd just like to ask you the question we ask all applicants. Why are you interested in this particular committee, the Affordable Housing Trust?
Affordable housing has been sort of a pet thing, love of mine, my entire career. For various reasons, I wasn't able to get into it during my corporate lifetime. I've been here seven years now, surprisingly, just this month. And I feel like it's time to give back to the community, hoping that maybe some of my past experience and education could be of some help. So. Very interesting. I read some of the, your housing development plan and was very impressed by the effort that's being taken to that end.
Mr. Goodrich?
I, it's, again, we've said this before, but the caliber of folks that are coming forward, going through your resume, it's, again, just fascinating. I guess that, for a question, is there anything in particular now that you're, that you're looking at saying, "This is why I wanted to jump in," besides just, "Oh, I wanna give back"? Or is there anything that you've seen that said you wanna kind of dig your?
Yeah, I think that unfortunately, I grew up in an area much like this and have seen the changes a little bit faster where I grew up than here in terms of money coming out of the city and coming down and really changing the dynamic of what was a really lovely local, small feel, small-town feel. And you can't stop that, obviously. COVID accelerated that in many areas. And I think it's really important to, for community to get together and figure out how to keep people who are working here, living here, and who are viable parts of the community. So that's really, and also, as someone who's sort of in the affordable housing category myself, that obviously is of interest to me, to make sure that people can actually afford to stay where they wanna live and work.
Thank you.
Ms. Kern?
Sure, hi. I think your project manager experience would be terrific. The committee's small, so there's not a lot of heavy lifting, but there is a lot of heavy lifting, if you get my drift. So I think your expertise, you know, we have a lot of developers that come before us to talk about, we do own a piece of property over on Stockbridge that we've been trying to partner with somebody with for a while. So it'll be great to have your perspective and your expertise. So thank you for stepping forward.
Super fun. Thank you. Enjoy the opportunity very much.
No, you asked my question, you know, if there was this aha moment that said there's, is this, this is the project I wanna be involved in, or this is the project that I don't think is good, and I wanna make sure that it doesn't happen again, that type of stuff.
I'd love to see North Situate be redeveloped. I have dreams.
Ms. Canfield?
Just real quick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're a great asset. One thing that we will be voting on next week is the acceptance of the new master plan.
Uh huh.
So I would encourage you to look at that, because there's a lot of community conversation about the importance of affordable housing to the, you know, the folks in the community, recognizing that, you know, we like our parents to stay here if they can, that sort of thing. So, you know, in your spare time, it's, it'll, it's already on the website, the proposed, I believe, so. And then we'll vote on the acceptance or not Tuesday next week.
Terrific. All right, I will do. Thank you for that.
Well, and I'd like to say that the Affordable Housing Trust was also instrumental in funding the new Lawson Green project that is behind the central school housing. So, you know, hopefully, there might be some more projects like that coming our way, I would hope. And I would think we would all hope the same, so. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it. And we'll be voting at the end of the meeting, Lorraine, or?
Yes.
Okay. You don't have to stay. Go home and watch the game and watch us on the screen.
I'll do that. How's that? I have early mornings. I might be going to bed.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming in.
So we have, next, discuss vote, special event application. Somebody's plunging into the ocean on January 1st, 2022.
Oh, the board signed up. You didn't know that?
I didn't hear about that.
I'm in.
Are you the swimmers?
Gabby Foreman here, yes.
I'm Abby Foreman.
Adam St. Jean.
And your addresses are, just hope for the record?
I live at 43 Brook Street.
Two Murphy's Lane.
Two Murphy's Lane, thank you.
I'm sorry, I would get your name.
Adam St. Jean, S.T. period, J.E.A.N.
So would you like to tell us about the seaside plunge?
We're hoping to have our first annual polar plunge. We were looking for an idea that we could do during the pandemic. It's been really hard, so this was an outdoor event that we thought would be fun and different for SEF to hold.
So this is the Situate Educational Foundation, yes?
Correct.
Does anyone have any questions about or wanna sign up?
I'm in.
You just heard your first volunteer. He's in.
I sign up, Maura.
I am not in, but I do wanna say that thank you for all that the SEF does. You give, you know, give such great grants to the system. So if this is something that you think people will come forth to, you, you do have competition at Hammerock, though, right? Isn't there an annual?
Polar plunge.
A polar plunge in Hammerock? So I don't know if you guys are aware of that, and if you're coordinating with them at all, or if you're just, this is a different one for?
This is a different one.
Okay.
We're hopeful.
Just bring that up.
We're hoping we'll get more kids and families involved.
Due to the proximity, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Good.
Apparently Duxbury does it, and it's their number-one fundraiser of the year.
Oh, wow.
So we're hopeful we can duplicate that.
So how does that, do people register and then pay an entry fee kind of thing?
Yes, and then they can get people to sponsor them, too.
And we have, we have waivers. If you need a copy of our waiver, and we brought our insurance certificate.
She'll take all that.
So do I your motion?
May I just, a question with regards, do we think 10 to 11 is enough time, you know, to get everybody in and out of there? Should the permit be a little bit longer? I know it's quick. Everyone's quick, in and out, but I'm thinking. Okay, if everyone thinks that's fine, I was just trying to give you a little more time. I think that's enough time.
We can take a little more time on the application if you want.
You need set up time?
Yeah, 9:30 set up.
We'll probably set up tables and do like coffee and hot chocolate, we were thinking. And then we might have some raffle items, so if you, whoever fundraises the most, will do that as well.
So you probably would need more time tomorrow's point.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion. We'll move to approve the special event permit to the Situate Education Foundation for their special event, the seaside plunge, on January 1st, 2022, at Piggy Beach, from 9:30 to 11:30 AM.
Thank you.
Second? Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Can't wait to see the pictures. Towels.
Thank you very much.
That's a great idea for a good swag to sell. A long towel with SEF on it.
We're printing them out currently.
Oh, look at you, how smart you all are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
And now we have, discuss vote, 62 Blades Road parking easement request. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you kindly give your name and address, please?
Scott Fitzgerald, 38 Flitham Street, Warwell.
Okay.
I did send a PDF. Oh, you have it there, so. I wasted my ink. I assume it's in the same order that I sent, so. First off, thanks for giving me the opportunity to come discuss this. I purchased this house for my family about a year ago. It's actually, I think it was October, right around now. And when I purchased it, the previous owner made me aware of the two-year parking license that was granted. So based on what was written in the vote that the board issued on June 30th of last year, on what was written in the vote that the board issued on June 30th of last year, I wanted to kind of come in and get the ball rolling on what might be a permanent solution for that, um, that parking area. And I'm open to, to all suggestions. And, um, I put together just some pictures, just so you could kind of get an overview of what, um, what it looks like and what we're kind of dealing with here. Um, so the first picture is just obviously an overview. I'm sure you're familiar with the area. The second picture just kind of gives a rough outline of where the property line is and where the, so the yellow line there kind of shows, um, where the, the easement area might be. Um, the blue line designates the conservation area. This is on page two, or page three, if you count the cover page. Um, so as you can see, uh, the property is very close to the street. There's no parking on the left side of the house. That's where the, uh, public access to the beach is. Um, so the, the parking area closest to the house would be to the, to the right, unless you wanted to try and park on the, the front lawn there. Um, the next sheet there is an actual plot plan. It's not a, an engineered, staked-out survey. It's just a plot plan that's given when you purchase the property. And as you can see, the, the line is probably even tighter than what I, I showed on those actual, uh, pictures. Might be overkill with the pictures. I was trying to get an idea of what's, what's there. Uh, the next picture, I believe, is from 2017, 18. I think it's when the previous owners were finishing up their renovation. It's just a cleaner picture of a, of a, what it looked like, um, at the time that they were granted the, the license. Uh, I got that from, from Google Maps, but I figured it's older and it looks a little different now. So, the next two pictures illustrate what it looks like now. Um, again, that's just a, a estimated, the red lines, an estimated, uh, property line there. Um, and I just want to, the next one that has the green circle on it, that is actual conservation land, um, that the town is currently maintaining. Um, it's a little bit in disarray. As you can kind of see, it's, it's overgrown. There's actually a path between the, you can kind of see where that rock is in the, in the right side. There's a path that gets you to the walkway onto the, uh, the boardwalk there, um, to walk along the ocean. But it's a little bit overgrown. Um, and then, actually, the last page, I included the, the letter, but I don't think you have that in your, um, packet, but you probably have it in your file.
Yeah, we've got everything.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure we're prepared. Um, so I want to, you know, discuss what you might think the best option might be to, um, you know, make, make something that's not an annual, or biannual, or continual, uh, event where we have to meet to grant extensions of licenses. Um, my proposal would be to, um, create a permanent easement where I would pay for the cost of the engineering, if it was required, and, uh, recording fees, um, in exchange for maintaining that conservation land that's to the right there. Um, but again, like I said, I am open to all suggestions.
Anyone want to start? Ms. Canfield?
Um, thanks for coming in. Go buy your property every day. Question for Jim. If, um, if there is a permanent easement on that property, um, does that impact rights, responsibilities, et cetera, for the seawall portion?
The town still owns it, so I wouldn't think so, no.
Okay. So if something happens like it did two years ago, or whatever it was, we would be able to, we wouldn't need to come back and sit back up? Thank you.
Technical.
And you could put that in the easement, too, to the town retains the right to access over the easement. That's simple enough.
I'm sure. I just read the notes from our prior meeting. I guess, and maybe I don't
know all the history of this, but why would the town give you the land? I mean, I understand that you need it.
Yeah.
I understand it'd be nice to have it. But why would the town give it to you instead of just making some more public spots for everybody there?
Um, I mean, like I said, I'm open to, to other options. It's just that it would be a, I guess, a hardship to not have any.
Yeah, I, I completely get it. And I would, I, I mean, that's why I think I mentioned in the last meeting that we should sell it to you, you know, just, but there's no way to sell it without it being an open bidding process, which, in which case you could lose it.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's my dilemma. I don't know why, you know, I, I think that's the solution, you know, if, you know, I, I understand you want it and you need it. It'd be nice for you to have it, but, you know, a, a lease that we're making a hundred dollars a year or something on it isn't really.
Yeah, I mean, this was obviously just for a dollar a year. Um, I guess the idea behind it was that you wouldn't have to deal with it in the future. Um, but again, I'd be open to a, a long-term lease for substantial, you know, for a significant amount of money, not a dollar.
Right.
But not $10,000 a year, but, you know, something that would, would make sense. But then you're still kind of dealing with it, I guess, in a sense.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's, that's just my two cents. I, I'd, I'd love to find an option for you that makes sense with us being the fiduciary responsibility to the town. You know, if there was a more significant lease, then I could see that being something that we could put back into that area, or back into the sidewalks, or back into something.
Well, the other thing to mention, too, is that whole area, driveway area, needs to be improved as well. It's not, it's half paved, there's half, you know, uh, it looks like part of the seawall kind of sticking up out from the, the ground, and then there's half gravel. So it, it needs to kind of be, I didn't do anything to it because I didn't own it, but it needs to be graded. And, um, I don't think conservation will want you to pave it, but you could put, you know, seashells or, uh, gravel or something, just to, to, uh, you know, make it look more level and usable.
Back in the seventies, the, the Board of Selectmen at that time had given the homeowner a license for those parking spots. And then nothing ever happened after that. They just retained it as if it was theirs. I think everybody thought it was their property until they were going to sell the property a couple of years ago, and was realized, well, that's not yours. That actually belongs to the town. And then they came to the board and asked if they would give them a license, which would help them sell the property, which we did. But now he's bought the property with the license that the board might take away. Your issues are a license, which you can give with their three-year max, and you just have a bad night, put it on the agenda and revoke it. You could do a lease, a long-term lease, that would still require a town meeting to authorize a lease in excess of three years. And there would be some bidding things, but we can probably get around that. An easement, which we can just go to town meeting and ask them to grant, or a sale, an outright sale if possible.
Yeah, it looks like in 1977, there was a five-year lease, five-year lease granted for a dollar that was approved at, uh, at town meeting. Um, it was also Tip O'Neill's sister, so that might have had something to do with it.
Well, that explains a lot. Mystery solved. Okay.
We gave her three-year without town meeting approval.
Mrs. Curran?
Um, I don't, I mean, I, I don't have an issue with granting him an easement, um, in exchange for protecting it as long as we can. You know, I thought, Mrs. Canfield brought up a great point, making sure we have access if we need to do work on the seawall. Um, to me, a permanent easement is much more, you know, if we're going to charge him a dollar, why would we do that? I mean, to manage the billing of a dollar on annual basis is probably more than it would cost to grant the gentleman a permanent easement. I mean, he had, it doesn't look like to me like there are any other options for him for parking. I'm just looking in the front of your house, sir. Is there anything, there doesn't seem to be any room there, is there?
No, a lot of sidewalk. If you try to find.
On the sidewalk, yeah. Yeah, that's what I, I didn't think so. So I personally don't have an issue. I, you know, I, it was something that was granted to them years ago. I don't, I don't even know if we split it, if that would give us any additional space there with that little piece being a little conservation area, space.
Yeah, but parking there over the summer, this was the first summer we were able to use the home, you can barely fit two full-size SUVs in there. Two cars will fit, but not, once you get bigger vehicles, you'll be, uh, hitting doors, I guess.
You can't access that little stub area without going through the main piece, is that conservation island, for lack of a better term, pointing that conservation island is in the way.
Right. So I, I personally don't have a problem with doing that. Andrew?
Yeah, I, again, personally, I don't have a problem with the, some sort of an easement. Um, are we really going to put more parking over there? I, I did, I loved your point about access for the seawall. I'm trying to think if there's any other need for us, if it's for handicapped accessibility or anything, any adjustments we may have to make around that to make sure that we have, you know, just, I guess I just want to always make sure we have the ability to, for access issues, that that's, we can take care of that, that much.
So if you look here, that, that's not part of the walkway. That's just part of the, uh, holds up the railings to about here. And then this walkway goes to here, and then you go to the right to go down the, uh, the way there. But you could, like, um, Mr. McGraw said, you could put any access language in that easement if it's necessary.
So if we, we grant an easement, we can put any language we want into it?
Not any language, but yeah.
Well, I mean, it's legal. I'm not suggesting we do something illegal. I, I'm just asking, so does this mean that nobody from the public would have access to that particular piece of property?
Correct.
So, there's some value in, in getting this, and I wouldn't say it's a dollar. I wouldn't say it's $10,000, but there's something there. Um, the pocket park that's down there, it's close to the pocket park, right?
Mm-hmm.
Know the little park that has the little benches on it?
There's, uh, there's actually public parking in between.
Right.
What you see is that, I call it the conservation island and the pocket park. There's probably four or five spots that are there. And the sidewalk does not go in front of this property. It, it stops and goes back out to the street and actually crosses over.
So to the neighbors, that, that little pocket park means a lot, that it looks better than it looked for a long time. So my question would be, the conservation piece that you, that is where you are, you would be willing to do the upkeep on that with the Conservation Commission's approval as to making it look better?
Absolutely.
And so that it looks more like it's a piece of that entire?
Yep.
Area?
Yep, absolutely.
Well, the reason I, he came in now is because if we're going to do an easement, there's work that has to be done to get it on town meeting in time, and we'll have to get its, he'll, he'll have to get it surveyed, get us a survey plan on what exactly it is and all that stuff. So, if the board wants to get on another route, then we'll get on another route. But to go on the easement, we'll, we need to get started shortly.
So does the board have any?
I mean, I don't know why we're not leasing it to them for, make some money and put it back into that area there and clean up that area and the rest of the, I mean, it's, it's a valuable piece. You, you could put at least two or three other public park, parking spots there. And I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not trying to gouge you for anything, but whatever the value of that is, whether it's somewhere between a dollar and $10,000, you know, make an offer of something that's reasonable. We could sign up, get a lease together for it, and we could pour that money back into that area.
Um.
You don't have to do it right now.
No, no, with respect to a, a lease, um, what, can it be, it can only be?
For the Board of Selectmen to issue a contract, they can only do a contract up to three years.
But I have no problem going to town meeting either with it.
So they'd have to get a town meeting. If they want to do a 20-year lease, they'd have to go to a town meeting for authority to enter into a longer-term lease.
Yes, Ms. Canfield? Um, what about a structure of a lease that is tied to until title transfer? I don't know what it gets us. I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, then the board has the chance to revisit when there's a property set.
Yeah, I mean, the, it could be, it could be a 20-year lease.
Right.
With the property owner. And there's a, there's a provision in the lease that says if the property changes hands, then the lease voids, and the new owner would have to come in and get another lease. You could put that provision in the lease.
Right, which would not be so great for property value because you have an unknown.
But if he was going to dispose of the property, that would cause a cloud, yes.
Just like it did when you purchased it.
Correct.
Right. Um, I agree with Tony, though, that, you know, a lease, structuring a lease that works for everybody. I think it protects the town's interest in the property more than a permanent easement, obviously. But we just have to figure it out.
Is there another option for, uh, consideration, uh, with a permanent easement? Um, I mean, I know that piece of conservation land is, is not that big. It's not going to cost thousands of dollars to maintain. Is there another piece of conservation land in that area that could be added to it? Um, I just don't want to, again, the goal, part of the goal is to kind of put it to, to rest, so it's not an issue for anybody going forward. Um, and if you do leases, or leases that expire, um, then it's, uh, it's something that's going to be perpetual.
The last year was all, last lease was only five years and it expired. If she hadn't sold the house, we never would have known. I mean, it was.
Yeah.
I cannot believe I'm advocating for this, but here, here's an argument against leasing or selling. I mean, let's be honest, that little area is, it's kind of dumpy. Right, we should be doing better. And if it does.
It's oceanfront, dumpy.
Right. But if someone's actually going to be, like, okay, we leased it, are we really going to take, if we get that extra whatever money to really maintain it? I mean, if he's going to maintain it and it looks amazing, if it looks way, much better, that value could be a lot more than what, that's all I'm saying, that if there's another piece that he can maintain, or if he's actually going to maintain that and it actually looks really good, that could do a lot more for what, the value of it could be more than whatever the lease is. That's my only thing. Because it's a pretty amazing spot, and that's, that's my only thing to think about, because it is kind of.
Right, that could be the, the, the lease that they might maintain.
Look at the two, the two pictures. One, it's, it's all dead, and then the other one, it's all overgrown. It's, I mean, it's a, I, when that picture that I, I circled it in green, I guess I did, I didn't capture the whole, I should have taken a better picture of the whole, the whole piece. But I, you know, obviously I'd maintain both sides of that walkway, which is bigger than just the piece that I, I had circled in the picture with the green. If it goes, it, the walkway, as you can see in the picture, when it's kind of dead, there's two sides to that, uh, to that conservation area, which would create, you know, more of an expense. I wasn't thinking of that side when I originally circled it, but I'd be happy to do both, both sides of it. You'd want it to match with what type of vegetation you'd be putting in there anyway. I'm familiar with what conservation likes and doesn't like, and I would obviously speak with them with regards to that.
Are you, is this going to be a rental property?
No.
No. Well, the next guy, I mean, it's.
I don't, I, I sold one of my rental properties to buy that for a, a permanent second home. Once we're, like everyone else, once your kids leave high school or normal, you move to Citro with less taxes.
Right now.
I think it's going to be hard to maintain that area that you're talking about, Andrew, because every single storm.
Well, that's, I guess that is to our point, is that, like, uh, Mr. Goodrich said, it would be more of an expense annually. I would have to do my lawn over probably every winter, I mean, every spring anyway, based on what I've seen so far. I've already had neighbors telling me, don't plant anything there because you're going to have to replace it. So, I know to that point, it would be, over time, you know, uh, a greater expense.
Anybody have any?
Well, my only suggestion is I hear that part, you know, part of the board is looking to pursue some sort of a lease. So I, I think it's up to, you know, um, you as well as Jim to come up with some sort of amount, if that's where you guys are going. I mean, I don't think we're here, we'll be here all night to figure out what the.
Yeah, it's your direction, whether you want to do a lease, or you want to do an easement, or whether you want to keep doing the license, or get on whichever road, or sell it, or get on whichever road the board wants to get on.
Well, for my point of view, there's no telling what happens at town meeting. And so I think if we can do a lease that's reasonable beyond the three years that we're allowed to do, I think that might be more palatable to the town than saying, quote-unquote, people say, oh, they're giving it away, even if it's for, you know, some sum of money, but so. I'm inclined to lease, a long-term lease.
Okay.
Anybody?
No?
If you can think about what you, I think Tony's right. I mean.
Yeah, I, like I said, I have no problem, you know, paying for a lease. It would just be, have the provision in there where if it exchanges hands and the lease automatically expires and has to be renegotiated again, that is a detriment on, on, on my end. Again, not that I plan to sell it. I just put a whole bunch of more money into it. Um, I mean, I would take the longest possible lease you'd be willing to grant for, you know, we could do it for X number of dollars a year until it reaches a payment, a full payment of $10,000, whatever the case may be. Um, if it was $500 a year until, put it this way, my example might be like a 50-year lease for 500 a year until $10,000 is paid.
I'm hoping for a lot more than $500 a year.
Well, I'm saying, do you get to the, it's basically a $10,000 lease when you look at that way.
Right, but over 50 years?
No, no. I would pay $500 a year, so it would be.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking it's worth more than $500 a year. I'm thinking not. I'm thinking not 10,000, not a dollar, but somewhere...
But if it was a $50, I'm sorry, if it was a $1,000 a year lease for, you know, 20 years, now that's, that's $20,000.
Right.
So, I mean...
Make us a couple offers.
I was just going to say, yeah. Come back with some proposals to us.
Okay.
I mean, we want to make enough money that we can do something significant to the area, you know, so, not, I'm not saying, but, yeah, but something that there's, that it would have an impact, because eventually, the town's going to have to vote for it.
Yep.
Right, and Karen had a good point. If it's $500, they're going to say, I'd rather park my car...
Well, I guess it would be the overall, I mean, I could, I would even, well, again, we'll...
Make an offer, say, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that, I'm going to do this, and I'm going to pay you this, and, and just remember, it's got to pass town meeting, so it's got to be reasonable.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, I was just in time to get the first pitch.
Oh, the lease, just, just throwing that out, the lease just went up.
Lucky you.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mancello. We're going to talk about fiber, municipal fiber network. We have, oh, we have an easel.
We have technology, and then we have me. Excuse me, just cut me off there.
Sorry. Where's the IT guy?
All right. High technology at its finest.
I hope you're getting this, Seth.
Are we really doing this? Yes, because we lose, we lose the projector. It's the only way to get it to resync.
Andrew, what are you going to do, show him?
You can tell this is happening anytime.
You can't teach height.
So Mike, I'm sure you can give us the abbreviated...
Oh, I have...
I can't keep using Reader's Digest because hardly anyone knows what that is anymore.
But I do have a Reader's Digest.
The Cliff Notes.
I will talk fast.
No, that's right, I have it on here.
What do they call it now? Nobody knows humor in uniform anymore.
I don't even know. It's not Cliff Notes.
No, except the Bridge.
It's not the, it's not the black and yellow books.
Sparks. Thank you, Andrew.
All right, so mind if I stand?
No, of course.
I'm on the camera either. So as we, I discussed with you guys previously, this idea of a fiber network to every household and every business in town. I started researching this well over a year and a half ago, right soon after I started with the town. Focus was more on wireless. I had a vendor that lives in town come to me and say, you know, you can put, give us access to all your vertical assets, we'll put wireless devices up, connect every house. Well, we eventually evolved to them offering every house wirelessly. The problem with a wireless solution, as you'll see in one of my slides, is that it's expensive to maintain. Wireless, it's always realignment, readjustment. I started looking at municipal fiber, and then suddenly, there've been a couple of federal incentives for municipal broadband grants for this type of a project. So I'm just going to go through the concept. There's one big differentiator between what you're going to see now and what other communities have been doing, is there are communities, like, we'll take Braintree, we'll take Westfield. They have, they're, they are an internet service provider. They basically provide you the, in the internet, the bandwidth itself. What this proposal is, is providing dark fiber. It's basically glass tubes that are empty, empty pipes that you own to your house, and then you, as a resident, can buy your internet service from any provider that we negotiate and put into a storefront, a marketplace. Concept being creative competition. So as we know, that we have a single provider, no competition, captive residents, Comcast. Many people are frustrated with poor service, annual increases or semi-annual increases. And right in the height of COVID, they decided to cap everybody with 1.2 terabytes when everybody was working from home, including students. So we're looking at, for us, some alternatives, which unfortunately for us, would be Verizon, DSL, satellite providers, and cellular, all slow and/or expensive. Just discussed Wi-Fi, it's an investment in infrastructure every six to eight years to replace the Wi-Fi. It's extremely labor-intensive to maintain it. 5G, so cellular, I mean, we went from 4G to 5G, that's a major investment. We're talking millions to retrofit cell towers. We still have a problem with coverage, even with the current carriers in certain areas of the town, there'll be plenty of people that still wouldn't have the service. And we would also have to still run fiber optic cables to smaller sites around town in addition to the cell towers, so we're still running fiber. So then, that leads us to a fiber optic network. There's a 50- to 100-year life expectancy. We say 50 to 100 because fiber hasn't been out that long, relatively speaking. I know that when we install fiber to connect all the town buildings, the manufacturer gives us a 30-year warranty on the fiber itself. So we know that it's got a long life. It's still being developed for future uses and higher speeds. And then, you know, the biggest risk for us that I hear on fiber is tree limbs coming down during storms and car accidents, very real problems. In the past year, we've had three, three of our poles that have town fiber on it get hit and subsequently had to be replaced. When a pole gets hit, obviously, it breaks and leans and the wires are stressed, the fiber can break. So it'd be important to have a support contract on that. Here in September, we lost two telephone poles with this tree. Our fiber is right here, right here, this fiber. It's basically the fiber, you have the high voltage power at the very top, it's secondary power right beneath that, and then we are within one foot of the secondary power. The bottom is Verizon, and then it's Comcast, and then it's us, so. But we're always the one right underneath the power, the municipal space that we get. So during this tree strike, we didn't lose any, any network connectivity on fiber. Many of the internet providers, DSL cable, for example, and even some fiber providers, they use non-symmetrical, so you might see 300 meg's down, 30 meg's up, upload, download and upload. Fiber, we would be talking about a solution that would be fully symmetrical, so let's say gig down, gig up, 500 meg's down, 500 meg's up. And if you think about closed infrastructure versus open infrastructure, a closed infrastructure be akin to, you know, here, this could be Comcast, and they lay the road, but only their Comcast trucks can ride on it, and then, you know, let's say, Fios would be laying their road, and only their trucks would ride on it. What we're talking about is the town paving the road and letting everybody ride on it, and then pass that benefit along to the residents. Some of the things that fiber can do for us, well, all of this, but for us specifically, can help us with education, students, public safety, especially when we're doing large events, telehealth for telemedicine, which I know we used with my parents during COVID, aging in place, so monitors, light alerts, things like that connect to the internet. The scenarios go on and on. How we can finance this, and again, a lot of these numbers that you're going to see are, we haven't done feasibility study, so we don't know the actual numbers until we do that, but from a lot of conversations that I've had and all my research, those are the numbers I've used. So it's an opt-in only. It's kind of like a house connecting to the water, a water line or sewer line. You pay a connection fee. So only those interested would pay. Here's a little financial stat, you know, we have approximately $5.7 million a year in internet spend in the town, and that's based on 6,800 resident households with $70 a month internet. There are three main components of the fiber proposal that I'm making: infrastructure, maintenance and operation, and internet service. So in, so we're looking at, if, again, until we do the feasibility study, we don't really know these, but these are some of the numbers that I've seen. If we took, if we assumed a 40% take rate, and I'll explain that in a second, but basically, the take rate is, what percent of the population do you think will make the switch over to this? A vendor that I spoke to that is instrumental in the backflow and offering Marketplace and making this an open network, they've said 60%. I've heard 50%, I use 40% because that was actually a real number from Westfield, the city of Westfield. So if you take all that into consideration, it's approximately rounded up to $20 a month for 10 years. Then you have the maintenance operation, again, the vendor told me it would be about 15, I think it's going to be closer to 20 a month, and that's to pay for outsourced customer service, outsourced tech support. It's a fully outsourced solution. This, this what we're talking about is actually a separate utility. It's not going to be a town department such as the IT department or any other existing department running this. So what we're talking about is approximately $50 a month for high-speed internet. Could be from 500 megabits per second or 500 meg to full gear. Right now, for $50, it's significantly cheaper than Comcast and faster. Once the, once the infrastructure costs are paid off, so that, the fiber installation after 10 years, now you have high-speed internet for $30 a month. This is how we, this is how we make up the monthly infrastructure expenses and the numbers behind it. We have 8,600 households, 126 public and private road miles. City of Westfield, you said that their all-in cost was $60,000 per road mile. If we assume a 40% take rate, we're looking at 3,400 homes involved at approximately $2,200 cost per household. And again, if you break that up over 10 years, it'd be approximately $20 a month. Maintenance and operations would consist of things, like I mentioned, third-party customer service, management, maintenance, savings for future equipment replacement, and middle mile. So middle mile is connecting the town of Situate to the actual internet. We're not passing the internet, but we're providing the conduit for people to get there. You, as a resident, would be able to go to our marketplace that we would set up, and then you could choose some, from some number of vendors, so say, Acme Internet Provider, and you could choose 500 meg's or a gig, whatever increments that they're offering for the fee that they're offering. There was a place in Ohio that was able to sell one gig for $10 a month. I don't know that we're going to get one gig. We'll figure that out during the feasibility study, the one gig for $10 a month, but we'll definitely be getting speeds faster than Comcast for significantly less. And not just internet, so right now, there's a big, big push or a big trend for cutting the cord. You've probably heard that trend, that term. And initially, you know, a year and a half ago, when I started looking at this, yeah, it was cut the cord. Since then, even very recently, AT&amp;T's acquisition of DirecTV, which happened a while ago, DirecTV came out with stream, so they call it an over-the-top service. They have boxes that you plug into the internet, and it's more of that traditional, semi-traditional cable box feel. You have the remote, you have your guide, it's traditional television. And the Xfinity Stream just came out with their version of that, too. And it's just, and indicated that the big players are recognizing that, you know, people are going for internet alone. And then if somebody wanted, we can do a third-party telephone service. Again, none of that we would be involved with. That's something that's direct from the resident to, from the provider. And then, one is an option, is once things get going and we get real clear visibility into our finances, we have the ability to provide free internet access to those that are financially need. Right now, 14% of our student body are economically disadvantaged, equates to about two, approximately 200 households. Central Public Schools during COVID provided a small number of students with cellular internet for those that didn't have it. Unfortunately, what they found were, coincidentally or not, many of these students that they were providing the cell device to lived in low cell coverage areas and weren't able to use it. So again, fiber could be a solution, and, you know, the piece of this would be that the costs associated with providing these households with this would be contributed or offset by other fees from other subscribers. So the implementation will be done over a number of years. We'll take Springfield, we'll take Westfield again. I think they're doing a five-year implementation, and they're in there in the last year. So what they do is they figure out, they survey as part of the project, they'll do some official surveys, and they will identify the areas of town that have the highest interest rate, interest, and then they will implement the fiber in those, those sections of the community. So you have much higher take rate in those because you're targeting them, and then you start going down in other areas. So it's a phased approach. The bonds would be done in a phased approach. And then we would have to set up, to do all of this, we'd have to set up a new utility. So in Massachusetts, it would be the municipal light plant, which this falls under, and that requires a positive vote at two town meetings. Some of the communities that are looking at the open network, specifically the open network, basically what I'm laying out tonight, these are just some of them, using a particular provider that I've been in conversations with. And again, different than the Braintree, different than the communities that are actually providing the internet, these are just communities that are providing an open network, no internet. And, and I'm here tonight basically to say, if you're interested in this, what are the next steps? I have a capital request for the feasibility study, it coming in for the, for the spring, for annual town meeting. You know, I think at some point, we should survey the community, maybe even before then, reform a committee. I guess now it's like, I guess before you were saying, okay, now what? And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that was abbreviated.
I'm sure there's a myriad of questions. Does someone want to start? And let's keep, we'll keep it moving along if we can. If you had a question earlier...
I did, yeah, it was capital costs. I think you had, at the 40% rate, I was trying to do the math quick, the 3,400 homes, that's really, that's about 7, what, 7.1 million-ish for the, that's...
Yeah, I'm guessing this is going to be probably a $1 million project.
And then, I was just trying to look up the average costs of what are my current Comcast bill, and so if I'm saving $40 and those people are on a basic plan, the savings are significant.
How much is the feasibility study? While he's calculating?
So there, as I'm proposing in the annual town meeting, there are a couple of pieces of it. The straight-out, flat-out feasibility study is a flat $25,000, but that, that only gets us halfway. So in preparation for the next town meeting, the special town meeting in the fall, we would be looking to actually put the numbers together so we can go to town meeting and say, okay, here's the full proposal. And to do that, we would, I'd be interested in hiring a project manager, somebody who's done this before, and that is another, actually, another 22...
So 50 grand about?
Yeah, it's 50 grand.
And after the initial feasibility, if we...
The request was 63. 63.
But you do it in half, half and half? Or would you do the whole thing at once?
His request is for the whole 63. Well, that's for the feasibility study, is that what you were talking about, the half?
Well, you had said you would get, get half the feasibility study done and then come back to the next town meeting for the other half?
No, so that's the project itself, so then the spring, the spring would be the full feasibility study, and then we would take and put together the full plan, feasibility study results plus a plan to go before...
For the second town meeting.
Correct.
Andrew, what'd you get for numbers?
Saved about 500 bucks a year.
500 bucks a year?
For households.
The only problem on the savings is, a lot of people get multi-services with Comcast. It can't get rid of, it doesn't save you money to get rid of one, so...
So initially, this was, this would be a great solution for those that are just interested in cutting the cord, right, and going to the Netflix and Hulu services and YouTube TV. But recent, in recent development, we have DirecTV Stream and Xfinity Stream, which gives you that traditional television-like experience. So it's, it's different, but it's similar services in the end, so you're still getting television.
Right, so this is the cut-the-cord kind of model?
It's a cut-the-cord with, on steroids, if you will. The steroid part is the game-changing DirecTV Stream and Xfinity Stream. So, so these guys realized that everybody's cutting the cord and going to YouTube TV, so they're, they're not missing out, and they've come up with their own service, and they said, here's a cable box for your TV, it's wireless, it will connect to your internet... It's wireless, it will connect to your internet connection, and you will be able to get all the stations that you used to get.
Morris?
If Tony's done, are you done, Tony?
Yeah.
I just have a couple of things, Mike. So kind of to follow up with Tony, the different services that Comcast provides, can voice-over IP go through this fiber network as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then you had mentioned, I have a number of questions, so sorry, but I'll be quick. You had mentioned that there is municipal space on the poles today. How much of the town is already, already has fiber network in that space? And is it the right fiber?
So that fiber won't be enough.
Okay.
We basically, we're basically going, we're running a single strand to every single house.
Okay.
Collectively around the ring. I think we have probably 32 strands.
And that, those are just to connect municipal buildings today?
Exactly, schools and that, right. And they're, and that, the municipal space we're allowed to use at no cost. When we start talking about this and setting up the utility, we actually have to pay a licensing fee per pole.
To?
As a utility.
Net grid?
I don't know if you own some poles, if it's the local or.
Net grid? That was my question, too. Okay, that's what I thought. That would be part of the cost analysis.
Yes.
Part of the cost analysis would probably also include how much it runs, how much it costs to actually manage the municipal light plant, right? We would need staff.
I'm thinking, because most of this is going to be outsourced, that we do not, we would not need staff. And if we did, it would be like part-time, less than 10 hours. There will be obviously a committee that runs the utility, our board, and then maybe an employee, a part-time employee. I don't really see if, the goal here is to outsource everything. I don't want Citrus to be an internet service provider. I don't want to do it. Many, many communities have decided they wanted to do that. And they've set up big departments to do this. Westfield, they charge $70 a month for gig down, gig up. We're looking at just providing maybe a solution that you can get a gig for $50 a month. And then that will drop down to $30 a month after your connection fee is paid. So we're not, it's, it's a different model. But to answer your question, I foresee this meeting maybe needing a part-time employee.
Okay. And then my last question is, do we know what percentage of the town has 5G today?
I do. Not as a percent, but I can tell you.
How many, how many poles it's on today?
Oh, yeah, I'm very intimate with cellular coverage right now. So the town is switching over from Verizon as a carrier to AT&amp;T. And all the carriers are on the transfer station, Town Hall, and the Racquetball Club. AT&amp;T is the only carrier that's up on Tilden. So those are actual big towers. Verizon in January turned up a, they call it a macro cell.
Right.
Or a small antenna down on Allen Place on Front Street. And that actually lit up that whole area, the Harbor, Front Street, Cole Parkway. But those small little antennas that sit on top of the utility poles only cover up to three-quarters of a mile. So Verizon has plans in the years to come that they're going to actually run those similar antennas down, I think they're going to put four of them on Hathaway, because Hathaway in East is somewhat dark, right? You know, you have a rare exception, that you get, you get good cell, cell coverage, but, so Verizon has acknowledged that. AT&amp;T's solution is that tower on Tilden. I have been in talks with them. They actually have pretty good coverage on, down in, not pretty good, adequate coverage on Front Street. Verizon's better because they have that local antenna. Both, both carriers are developing their footprint.
Okay. And then my only last thing is, there's a lot of concern, just while you're here, brought up about Wi-Fi in the harbor. So just want to make sure that that.
So I can give you an update on that.
Stays lit, it's, you know.
It's bone dark, it's being pulled shortly.
But is it going to be put back on at some point?
The offer, the information was provided, and I believe the Waterways Committee, from what I understand, decided that they do not want to do it. So I don't, it's, it's, how do I say this?
You can't, we don't have to talk about it now, it's not on the topic, but you can't put the harbor dark in summer.
So, real quick, the infrastructure that's out there is dying. We're losing access points on, almost on a monthly basis. It's like literally giving it CPR to keep it alive. Manufacturers just continued support on all the access points and the controllers that manage them. So we either need to invest money in replacing it, or we turn it over to a third party. There's a third party called Munchen, who has already started lighting the harbor. They have it at Boatworks, they have an antenna that sends it out across the harbor, they have it on top of Maria's, which sends it across the commercial pier, and they have it all down the waterfront. The piece that they're missing is actually right all of our slips in front of the Harbor Master. And they, they're interested in connecting or attaching an antenna on the building. All this and more information was provided to the Harbor Master with the idea that you would engage the vendor and come up with some RFP to offer them space on the building. My understanding recently was that the Waterways Committee did not want to do that. It would be zero cost to the town.
Can we, I don't think that's a true representation of the facts, because I was at the meeting, so can we just put it on as a future agenda item? I don't want to take it up tonight.
That's all, that's how I heard it, so.
Yeah, I know, I know, not, I get it. But we have to come up with a solution before next summer, so.
Okay. Any thoughts on next steps?
Yes, Ms. Candy?
All of my questions were answered, except you did mention the possibility of federal grants. Is that, are there programs outside of ARPA, or is there some, there are?
The bill right now at the federal level is still being ironed out.
Oh, it's part of the infrastructure bill?
There, there is, but I think it's only 60, 60 billion. It's not whole, right?
That's all.
But I think if you extrapolate that, it might, might not be a significant amount. Part of the feasibility study is that they will look for grants.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you for all of the work you've done to educate us prior to this, because if this, we come in cold on this, I think we would have been a little confused, so thank you.
Sorry, did you have something?
Tell them.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, my position is I think of some sort of a committee to kind of look at this, to kind of help move, as you said, the survey, to see interest, to see, I think that might be a good kind of next step. That's where I am on it at least.
Well, I feel like maybe working group might be better, because then it's more informal, you can get it moving faster, we don't have to have appointments. I think, Maury, you had mentioned that you knew a couple of people in town who kind of technology, people might be interested, it was a long conversation, a long time ago, but I just think there's probably a lot of people in town who might be interested in contributing to the conversation and helping you move it forward, so. Tony, did you have something?
Just, I guess, two quick things. 10 years is kind of the payoff period for, you know, the infrastructure. Is this going to be obsolete in 10 years?
No. So fiber, fiber right now physically is sustainable for 50 to 100 years. It's still an active technology that they're investing in heavily. They try, what the researchers are doing in fiber, in the fiber space, they're trying to figure out how to send data faster. And right now, over the fiber. And right now, they are, they have achieved speeds that continue at 10, because there's no practical use for it today. So they're still, they're still doing it, researching it, investing in it.
And there'll be a wire that's going to run into every home. Every home will have to buy a modem.
So, yes, as part of the project, they get what's called an ONT, apologize, it's on-network, and I always forget what T is. But very similar to a cable box, but it's kind of like the brain, converts it from fiber to everything else, to internet. And then we basically will be following Comcast's path in, whether it's aerial or if there's already an existing conduit, we'd go right in the same conduit. Comcast doesn't own those conduits, usually they're put in by the household or the developer.
And real quick, because I know, what are the opponents of this saying? Why, like, why wouldn't you do it? I, I love the idea, I think it's interesting, I think there's some, some benefits.
Sure.
To it, but why, why are other communities not doing it?
Well, a lot of communities aren't doing it simply because they already have competition. So I talked to Cohasset, and they said, no, we're not doing it. We have FiOS and Comcast, Marshfield same. So it's, the communities that you saw on the list were communities that, I think maybe the exception of one, they only have one provider.
Yeah, but even so, this cost is much cheaper than FiOS, you know, even in a competitive market.
Because we're not looking to make a profit on it, we're looking just to break even. And so the difference between my numbers and what they charge is really their profit. And why we wouldn't want to do it. You know, it's a headache, you know, to be honest with you, right?
Well, that, the outsourcing thing is what got me. I mean, municipalities aren't typically, you know, great at running businesses necessarily and running a town, so.
Right, and if you were like Braintree and you had the utility, the power utility, they already have a customer service center. They actually added tech staff, and they're, and so, you know, they've turned it into an ISP, but they were set up for that. You know, and some of the others, because if we miss our target, we're looking at 40% take rate initially, we'll get better clarification on that once we do the feasibility study. If we only get a 30% take rate, there's a risk to the town that we didn't collect enough money to pay the bond. I don't know how that is dealt with. But conversely, if we get a higher take rate, now we have more money than we expected to pay the bond, so.
Yeah, I mean, we'll want to see that break-even analysis, I think that's what Andrew was getting at.
Yeah.
So, great, thanks for bringing it to us.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, discuss both DPW contracts, Kevin Cafferty.
And Sean McCauley.
Hi, Sean.
Good evening.
We have three exciting contracts that everybody's been dying to see tonight, I know that. Our first one is going to be for the award of our MS4 permit compliance, which is an engineering company, Horstley Witten, that we've been using to comply with Phase 1. I can take any questions on it, or Sean can answer in detail, because he's been working with it on a daily basis, I believe. Basically, all our drains in town, and all the drain pipes and outfalls have to be sampled, tested, mapped. There's a lot of different things that have to go on in order for us to meet our state permits, so this contract helps us accomplish that.
Did it go out to bid?
This is a continuation of, the original RFP went out in 2019. This is the third year of the permit. And they've, they've laid it out for certain accomplishments every year, and we've been awarding it in pieces. So this is just another compliance year, basically. Some leftover from last year to complete inspection of the outfalls. COVID disrupted hiring that outside consultant for a bit. We did do just over 100, and we have just over 300. So they'll complete the final 200 this year. And that's permit-related, that's a, that's to meet the requirement.
200 outfalls.
300 total.
300 total, but 200 outfalls left to be sampled. And there's a whole procedure that you have to sample and test for different materials when you, when you do it. When you said 200, I want to make sure it's like 200,000 to 300,000.
Questions?
Motion?
Please.
Move the Select Board Award the Contract to Provide Professional Engineering and Planning Services to Support Citrus' Storm Water Management Program and Compliance with EPA's MS4 General Permit to the Horstley Witten Group for $138,400.
Second?
Second.
By Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. Next.
Thank you. The next contract is for a boom mower and stump grinder. Yeah, for a boom mower and a stump grinder, for a piece of equipment. Money was allocated at town meeting in the past. Were able to find something that can do what we need, and it's actually in stock, so we jumped on it. We're not going to have to wait two years for it, so. It's out in Springfield now, we went out, took a look at it, we looked at two machines, one was used, one was new. We're going with the newer one because of warranty, we don't want to avoid the warranty, and the other one was a little beat up. So, but they're available, and we're going to act on it. Excuse me, I would like to act on it.
Questions?
You can try it out at my house if you want.
I got a few stumps for you.
I mean, that was kind of the issue with the usual, what do people do with loaner cars? They might have loaned a piece of equipment that you're giving to DPW to dry out. Go ahead, drive it in the water, it's a loaner, we don't care, so if you can afford the new one, get the new one, we're better off.
And town meeting approved enough funds for this? I quite imagine, okay.
Wire motion?
Yes, please. Move that the Select Board approve the purchase of a new stump grinder, boom mower, and high-flow tractor from Tri-County Contractor Supply, Inc., for $98,323.20.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ben Hanny, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. Next, Morton Salt Company.
Our third contract is, we attach ourselves to the state bid list in order to get the best salt rates. This is for our salt for this season, which is Morton Salt Company, first time we've used them. Since I've been here, we've been using Eastern Salt, but Morton came in with the lowest price, and that's who we're looking to award it for. Just as a heads up, the price has changed, it's gone up by $8.15 due to all the shipping problems. We realized what was going on, because we stay in touch with the salt suppliers, and we basically filled our shed under the old contract to save the $8.15. So our shed is full right now, but depending on what we get for winter, we may be purchasing salt sometime in the future, so this sets us up for that. And if, if the values continue to go up and up and up, at the end of the year, next year, we may fill our shed again if it looks like it's going to raise up. So that's where we are with that.
So it is, it's an annual bid?
It's an annual bid. Sometimes we, we have the opportunity to extend it if there's no cost increases, we could extend it for an additional year, up to two years, I think. But I think it's typically one year. They don't know what's going on with the shipping, so nobody will want to do it for that long.
Motion?
Move the Board, Select Board to Award the Contract to Purchase Road Salt from Morton Salt Company for $56.60 per ton.
Second?
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I will speak out, just if anybody wants to plow and has a plow and is interested, or has a CDL and is interested in looking for work, DPW's hiring. We are concerned, as the rest of the country is, about plow operators and what we're going to have for service this year. We're watching it very closely, and we're trying to bring back everybody we usually have. Our fingers are crossed, but we're concerned in, we're seeing different materials that we're having problems getting, but we're, we're watching it very closely.
We see the signs up there.
Yeah, how's our rate compared to Norwell, Cohasset, and Hingham?
Well, if you're listening, Norwell, they get the best rate in the whole country, I think, so that's what they have on their signs. You know, we're, you know, we're there, I mean, we're all within a facsimile of each other. You know, there's 30 different pieces of equipment, we might be high on one, they might be high on another, so it, it all depends, you know, what you want to, what you want to do and how you do it. We try to do a lot of stuff in-house with our own guys, we do our own sanding. We have one sander truck that's been on order, as you remember, since last April, and we'll be lucky if we see it next year, the way things are going now, because it's been pushed back so far. You know, so that's going to be a problem. We may be looking to bring in a contract to do additional sanding, but we'll, we'll just see what goes on. I'm telling my guys we're going to have to be flexible, my people are going to have to be patient, might take us a little longer to do the roads, but we will do them with the guys we have, but it's just the way it is right now. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Next on the agenda, Declaration of Surplus, Nancy Holt. This relates to the mine fire station, number one, and number two, to a list that was given to us by the school department. Minefire station, apparently we couldn't exactly find that we had voted.
It was up for disposition before town meeting in 1999, it was decommissioned in 1992, it was brought back before town meeting again. The board voted it just recently when we appointed the auctioneer to sell it, but the actual declaration of surplus, I kind of think it happened maybe a couple times back in there, but just to be sure, I'm just asking the board to confirm that, yes, the old minefire station is surplus, put it on the record in recent history, just so we can move forward with the auction of it next Tuesday.
All right, motion?
Motion, please.
Move that the Select Board confirm any prior votes taken and declare that the old minefire station located on Mitchell Avenue is surplus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you not, are you like?
Yes.
Four, zero. Four in favor, one abstained.
We've had over six thousand unique viewings on one of their platforms, I think on their actual site, and they've had many, many people actually download the bidder package, so it should be a robust auction.
So it's a live auction, right?
It's a live auction onsite next Tuesday at eleven AM at nine Mitchell Ave.
But you don't have to be onsite, do you?
You'd want to go to the auctioneer's site to see, you'd have to be pre-registered, there's a ten thousand dollar deposit you have to put on in order to, it's not, you know, it'll be interesting to watch, but it won't be a cowboy affair.
Right.
It won't be like the Wild Guest.
Oh, all right, okay.
This.
The school department?
Yep, the school department, also, Dr. Dutch provided me with a list of surplus equipment, including two buses, they actually are so eager, they already brought me the, the.
The registration.
The titles, you go, have fun, get rid of those. So we're making a list, we already had Harbor Master declare surplus with this surplus, and Kevin, who just left, told me this afternoon that they have a whole bunch of stuff, of equipment that they want to get rid of, and they're going to make a list, so probably for your next meeting, you'll have another list from them, and then we'll do another online auction like we've done two times, three times already, and dispose of that. We've had very good luck with those auctions, getting rid of boats, equipment, and yes, we will sell the books in the bookroom at the old gates again, because they just keep selling.
And do the proceeds go to the general fund, or?
Yeah, the proceeds go to the general fund, if it happens to belong to one of the enterprise funds, it goes to their miscellaneous revenue.
Excuse me.
So, please. Move the Select Board Declare a Surplus, the items listed on October fourth, 2021 memorandum from the Director of the School of Finance and Business to be sold at public auction. Second? Second by Mr. Ben Nani, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. Next on the agenda, discuss vote appointment of authorized representatives for, we will spell it out, the American Rescue Plan Act program, Nancy Holt, and I think Jim may chime in on this, this is so we can apply for the grants from Plymouth County.
Plymouth County claimed the CARES funds, and then they again claimed the ARPA funds, and they have set up a program, in order for us to access the portal to put in any type of grant requests, we are required to have the executive branch, the Select Board, appoint an authorized preparer and an authorized representative. The town administrator would be the authorized representative if the board sees fit, and that would be the person that would be allowed to submit and approve, and the authorized preparer would be myself, again, if the board sees fit, to actually prepare the documents. So they've gone a little bit more formal than they were on the CARES Act.
So, with the COVID funds, I don't think that the board approved the grants, quote unquote, I guess we're calling them grants, right?
It was a reimbursement program.
Right, so you guys prepared it, and according to what their guidelines were, submitted quite efficiently, we were told by Plymouth County, for all of the funds that we were eligible for, and got all the paperwork done in and on time. This seems like it's a slightly different.
It's a different animal altogether, so this is a program where you actually can go out and fund a project, there's six different options, what we've been talking about the most has been infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure, because we have a lot of big-ticket water and sewer projects coming forward, it's just the limitations on the spending, you need to spend down in three years, so maybe it won't work for this project, but you could do it with one of these other, an INI project, or a water main project.
But it's essentially infrastructure.
Yes.
So, would the board be getting some sort of a list of the proposed?
Yeah, what we've really been trying to figure out is, how much of the money that the county has that's ours, are they going to give back to us? So they've put out recently, this is your first twenty-five percent payment, so now naturally you'd say, well, then I'm going to get four times that in total, but with the CARES Act, they said, well, this is the first allocation, this is what it's going to look like, and then they changed the allocations, and two communities got more money, everybody else got less money in the second allocation. So, we're trying to look and see, and then we'll come back before we do anything, so these are the projects that kind of match up, you know, off the top of my head, Hammerock Water Main is a six million dollar project, would do about, almost five million from the county, Nancy?
Yeah, our first twenty-five percent is eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, plus we have money that we've received as a direct path through from the state, so we have fifty percent already from the state of our, of that nut, which is probably going to be one point eight to one point nine.
So that almost matches perfectly, or the INI project on Oceanside almost matches perfectly, so we're kind of putting those together, then we'll sit down with Kevin and see which ones will meet the spending guidelines. The water treatment plant, if it will meet the spending guidelines, obviously, it's just the giant sucking son of a lot of money goes in there, and then we have to pile on top of that, so we'll come into the board, say, here are kind of your options, pick which one we want to go for.
So this figure in here is only twenty-five percent of the potential? Okay, thought it was low, and this was twenty-five percent memo.
I mean, we did, we did very well on the CARES money through the county, the county took a lot of credit for that, and they deserve it, the state really sent cities and towns into the FEMA reimbursement project, and they didn't get back anywhere near what the county gave back to us, so I'm hoping they do as well with the ARPA funds, but we really, it's like pulling teeth trying to get information out of them.
Well, they have an incentive to do well, because they did capture that money on behalf of all the towns and counties, so. Any other questions? Or please?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion?
Move that the Citrus Town Administrator, James Bedros, authorized to proof, finalize, and submit on behalf of the town any such ARPA grant application, and to make all representations and certifications required to be made on behalf of the town to complete each such application, with such approval, representations and certifications to be evidenced by the signature of the town administrator in such an application, and if any such ARPA grant is awarded, the town administrator shall be the recipient of such grant on behalf of the town. Further, can I keep going, or no?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Ben Nani, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries.
Move that the Citrus Finance Director, Town Accountant Nancy Holt, is authorized to prepare and enter information into the Plymouth County American Rescue Plan portal in support of one or more applications to Plymouth County for grants, ARPA grants to be funded from a grant received by Plymouth County under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second? Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
No opposed?
No opposed.
Thanks, Nancy.
So, we have a disclosure by municipal employee of a financial interest in a municipal contract, as required by general law, chapter two sixty-eight A, section twenty B. Aaron Lamont is currently working at the Council on Aging as an outreach coordinator, and will be working for Chief Thompson on call for the dispatch group. This requires the disclosure form be completed and submitted to the board for approval. So, does anyone have any questions about the aforementioned employee?
Nope.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Move the Select Board, as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two six eight A, have reviewed the disclosure forms from the following municipal employee who seeks to provide personal services to the Citrus Police Department Dispatch Group. The exemption under section subsection twenty B is approved for the municipal employee, Aaron Lamonte.
Second? Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we are on to the special town meeting coming up. We want to discuss vote assigned special town meeting articles, and remind people about the COVID guidelines related to special town meeting. As you all know, the special town meeting is coming up next Tuesday, it will be held in the high school gym. We are, as a board, strongly suggesting that people wear masks and socially distance where possible, and so I think that should cover the COVID guidelines. Does anyone have any questions, the board?
I just have one.
Yes.
Just at the moderator's meeting, when you have that, will you be discussing sort of the, the audio? It was really tough to hear people.
Yeah, we talked about having the moderator today, he's already met with Kathy, and they're going to have the consultant over there working on.
Okay.
Part of it, we think, last time was, we set up differently?
Yeah, we were horizontal, they're going to go back to more the vertical, which, the vertical was bad, but the horizontal was beyond bad.
Right, so they're going to work on that, even Jim said he couldn't understand what people were saying last year.
Okay, good.
Can we also have masks available out front?
We'll have masks, yep.
And we'll have a lot of signage that says mask strongly recommended, so.
Great. We don't have to vote on anything for that, right?
No, but we do want to make it clear to people that they should use their common sense and wear a mask.
We expect people will be wearing masks unless they have some underlying condition that prevents them, but we expect that they'll wear masks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Will the chairs be spaced out like last meeting?
I'm not sure she's going to do quite that much, but.
Not on top of the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me.
All right, so next, do we want to talk about the consent agenda?
You approved, I think you just need to go through and decide who's going to do what articles?
All right. So, I passed you out of the document, in the back. Yeah. I highlighted what would be the consent article, you were perusing the document.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, I didn't see this.
I didn't either.
Thank you. We get a hundred and fifty pages in the backup, and then we get?
I'm doing things I like to follow.
Yes, as well you should, because we need it. So, we've already voted one, two, three, seven, and eight, which leads us four, five, six, nine, eleven, and it was not at all clear today as to what is happening with the petition articles, not, the moderator's been trying to reach the petitioner, the, I think the planning board's been trying to reach him, it's not clear at all what's going to happen, so.
Oh, whether or not he's dropping already?
Yeah, we don't know what he's doing, we, various people have tried to talk to him about maybe helping him amend the language so it was more acceptable, but it's just, who knows?
I thought he informed already that eleven was definitely being withdrawn.
I thought so, too.
It's not clear.
Oh, gosh.
It was not clear, the moderator's not clear, and if he's not clear on it, I can only tell you, it's clear as nothing. So, we don't know what's going to happen, so.
The only thing I'd add is, someone's got to be prepared to talk on all of them, in case.
They pull it up.
They pull it up, so.
So, well, let's start with number four, which is the school, the feasibility study.
I'll take it.
So you're going to do?
Consent.
Why don't we start at one, like, the chair typically does one and two.
All right.
And three, there's, in case.
Somebody pulls it.
Definitely.
Yeah, cut it. So, skipping along to four. More, did you say you would do that one?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Capital plan. Do you want to do it separately?
Who does capital plan? Who's the?
Angela.
I got it, yeah.
Do you want to take that, or do you want to split some of them up?
It's easier just for one person to do it.
Sure.
All right.
I'm happy to do it if you don't want to do it.
No, I'll just, yeah.
CPA projects, Tony.
Can I do that?
Local acceptance of mass general law. Karen?
Sure.
Those two?
I'll take the, I'll take, you want me to take the master plan as well?
And the planning board basically said they're going to say one sentence of the master plan.
Yes, so, remind me, like, just procedurally, it's proposed by the planning board, do they go, I just don't remember, I always forget, do they go first? I guess the moderator just directs or whatever.
Yeah.
Usually they'll go first.
They would go first, and then we say how we voted, and they say how they voted.
And then sometimes it happens the opposite way, and who knows why?
Okay, well, righty.
One sentence.
I always get confused, okay.
Petition.
It was easy.
Well, we move by the petitioner, if he's there.
But we need to sign.
We all ride on.
We have to sign someone, yeah.
Remind us the vote.
It's three, two, three, two.
You and I voted in favor of one of them, because the other one was supposedly being drawn.
Minority, right.
Yeah, so.
Right, because I think the motion was not to approve, right? So that's why it was three, two.
Not to approve as presented.
Yes.
As presented.
Right.
So that was the?
That was for number ten.
So it wasn't that you were opposed to the idea, you just didn't support what he was doing?
Or we were opposed to the idea.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so would you rather speak to that, or to the, yeah, so we had different reasons for five and three?
So the issue really is, as I understand it, the special legislation, you're going to send that to the legislature, they're going to go down and say, this doesn't belong here, all you have to do is change your bylaw, so you can't come to us for relief when you have, so I understand he was going to try to craft an amendment to address the general bylaw issue, whether or not he has, or whether Jim's opined on that, I don't think that's happened yet, so, but there is one section of our bylaw that says you cannot do this, general bylaw, and that wasn't addressed in either one of his articles.
Well, as I said, Jim mentioned that he had been trying to get ahold of the petitioner and getting nothing for a response, so.
Okay, I would, I would say, if, I mean, sometimes we'll vote in advance of the meeting at six thirty, I would think if amendment does come forward, that I would recommend that we don't vote, because I don't think there's time to have that conversation, it's too big a conversation, that personally, which then whoever is could stand up and say, board didn't have time to review it, the original vote was three, two, and whatever.
And we can give a minority report also.
Yeah, oh, certainly.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Do one of the dissenters want to prepare a minority report in case?
How do you prepare it?
Right.
I'll talk to everybody, I'll give both sides of the.
Okay, you'll need to both objectively, of course.
Of course, of course, will you object?
It's our job. You can always get up to the mic as yourself.
True that.
That would be fun.
So, the only one who doesn't really have the thing is Karen Condon.
Well, if I put the first three, but they're consent, right.
Just making you aware.
I'd be happy to do the petition if you want.
Whatever you want.
I'll do it.
We'll.
We'll figure it out that night. You can put Tony slash Karen, and we'll.
But you were in a minority.
Right, so you could represent in my, depending on, I still don't know what we're voting on at this point.
If you want to do it, you can do it, that's, I mean, because you don't have another, we'll talk.
I'll put Tony slash Karen.
Yeah, and we'll figure it out.
Figure it out.
There may not be, should I go though?
True.
Well, he'll at least go through with this one.
He's got, he's got him radio silent.
Okay.
Let's see.
All right. Discuss vote one day liquor licenses, simply serving at Citrus Harbor Community Building, October twenty-third, one thirty to five thirty PM for a private event. Do I hear a motion, or a question?
No, do it.
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverage license to simply serving, sorry, it's a little small for me, I'm going to make it bigger. From six thirty-seven East First Street in Boston, Mass. for a private event at the Citrus Harbor Community Building at forty-four Jericho Road on October twenty-third, 2021, from one thirty PM until five thirty PM.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ben Nani, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Discuss vote board committee appointments, the Affordable Housing Trust, an excellent candidate in tonight, Elizabeth Howie. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to appoint Elizabeth Howie to the Affordable Housing Trust, oh, wait, I probably can't do that, because I'm on it, so I'm going to be quiet.
Of course you can.
I can do that.
Yeah, you're going to vote for her.
So I'm not just a liaison, I'm actually on the committee.
That's all right.
Okay, all right. Move to appoint Elizabeth Howie to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term of two years or until successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within 30 days.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Benyani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero, motion carries.
Which is great.
With our thanks to the candidate, Elizabeth Howie. We have three new appointments to the Citrus Harbor Cultural District, one is a chamber rep, one is a cultural council rep versus the cultural district rep, the other one is also a cultural council rep. Much culture going on around here.
Culture.
So would anyone like to nominate? Can we do them all three at once?
You can do, yeah, one motion for all three.
Okay. Someone like to?
Move to appoint Jane Higgins Norton as a Chamber of Congress Representative for a term of two years until a successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within 30 days, and move to appoint Susan Gallagher as the Citrus Cultural Council Representative for a term of two years until a successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program within 30 days, and move to appoint Barb, sorry, Brenda O'Brien as the Citrus Cultural Council Representative for a term of two years or until a successor is named in completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training in 30 days.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero, it's not even that late, so. Thank you to those people for volunteering for the Citrus Harbor Cultural District. Discuss vote new drain layers license, Robert B. Our Company, Inc.
Move to approve renewal of a drain layers license for Rosana Davis.
Second?
Wait, hold on, this is Rosana Davis.
That's what I see, too, right.
Yes, two, yeah, one's new, one's old.
Oh, renewal for Rosana Davis Sanitary Plumbing, Inc.
Second? Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
And move to approve a drain layers license to Robert B. Our Company, Inc.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero, thank you. Discuss vote 2022 annual town meeting date, folks.
I didn't want to have that conversation, sorry.
Does anyone have anything to say about that?
April 11th, this is the proposed date.
Well, it's mandated, right?
Right.
First Monday and.
So do I hear a motion to set the 2022 annual town meeting date?
Move the board's selectman to approve the annual and special town meeting date of Monday, April 11th, 2022.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm just checking holidays.
Five, zero, motion carries.
Just checking holidays. It's National Pet Day, I don't know.
Can't have town meeting then.
Yeah, I know.
Bring your pets to town meeting.
Celebrate that, we could, we could do some sort of a donation for the Citrus Animal Shelter at the, at the entryway on National Pet Day.
And for everyone's pleasure, the review discussed 2022 proposed select board meeting dates. I will note to everyone that we are still seeming to continue our meetings at 6:30, starting at 6:30. If anyone has any comments about that, or questions.
Looks fine for me.
Yeah?
It's fine.
Yeah, I think it's great.
You usually check school vacations and all that stuff, too, don't you?
You check school vacations, Jewish holidays, federal holidays, state holidays.
Great.
Right.
Works for me.
So.
I figured you might want to take a holiday, and then we can have a conference, we can vote at the next meeting, whatever you should want.
I, I do know, yeah, we can vote for it at the next meeting, some of the committees are trying to set their schedules for January, February.
Right.
And they try not to conflict with us, those that meet on Tuesdays, so if we could not delay it too much.
Yeah.
And I won't be at the.
What about it tonight? Do you think you can do that, too?
Well, could we vote it tonight, so people at least have a tentative schedule from us, and if someone sees something egregious, or we can revisit it and re-vote it if we had to, yeah.
Although it doesn't say vote on the.
Oh, you're right, it doesn't.
No, nothing checked out.
Okay.
It's really early, you can usually look at this tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right.
We're on top of it.
We have some very efficient committees.
Thank you, Lorraine, for all of that. On to other business liaison reports, any?
Do you have any?
No. Well, what's to get on for that game?
Well, I will, I'll say the DEI committee met last week to go over the safe space, which many of you read and commented on, and so they took everyone's comments very seriously, they had a nice, robust conversation, and so they are, you know, going back and kind of reworking this, two statements, one statement was for their committee, one statement was a proposal for our committee, so they are reworking them, and I've, they need to come in soon and give an update, so we need to figure that out, too.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's my update.
Lorraine, if you could put that on the list of potential.
They just need to say, you know, not be on schedule.
Okay, I'll let Tom know that.
Other liaisons?
The SHIRK Committee, their meeting, P44, they're, check out YouTube and check out, if you haven't seen them, they're making great progress.
They're very enthusiastic, seem very well organized.
Excellent job.
And they're ready to go.
I spoke to Senator O'Connor about the MBTA and the letter we sent, he tracked them down, and said we should hear shortly.
He parlayed.
That's better than sometime in 2022.
Maybe someday.
Yes.
So I'll just have to put a be in his body and remind him, but.
Wait. Correspondence, Mr. Goodrich? Do I have way?
I need to apologize, I didn't mention this on the town update, but tomorrow, Wednesday, 5 o'clock, Senior Center, 5 o'clock, it's going to be the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail, kind of a planning session, what they're doing, they're going to show printed materials, kind of a, and they're planning a soft launch of the, of their website early next year, so I think they're going to show some details.
And is this, this is the in-person meeting at the Senior Center, is that the one?
Yes.
Because there, there seems to be a couple of.
And virtual ones, that's later, but the big one for tomorrow, so if you want to get involved, tomorrow, 5 o'clock.
That's the schedule, Wednesday.
Wednesday. And the other one is, this is also, I love this, this is Sous Yum Brim.
I believe it.
Exactly, so what they're right now proposing, and talked to us about, is doing, in late November, a, it's kind of like a virtual celebration, and a, they want to re-sign the Friendship Pact, so they'll have their mayor, they're hoping to have the board, and we can have a kind of ceremonial, virtual signing.
They're trying to do it sort of Zoom-y, kind of.